...of the city council, incorporating the annual meetings notice of 2014, which was filed in the city clerk's office, posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2013, sent to the Star Ledger Home Newsletter, and all the compliance provisions of the open public meetings. Go for it, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-Augustine, Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sudania.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Grover.
At this point of the meeting, we have our public speaking. If anyone wants to address this body, what we normally do is we have them stand right in the end of the table there. Rich, is that good for you?
That's fine.
So, please state your name and address for the record.
Tom McCrea.
Your name is?
Tom McCrea, 519 Spencer Street.
Spencer Street?
Yes.
That is your...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us all here today. My name is Tom McCrea, as I've said before. I'm a graduate of Elizabeth High School, upper academy. I'm a member, I'm a resident of the sixth ward for approximately 18 years now, Mr. Frank Maza's ward, and also a college student at Boston College, undergraduate, political science. I'm here today as an active citizen, an active resident, enacting my civil duties to speak on an issue that I pride myself on, and conditionally because the Elizabeth Animal Shelter is such a poorly-run establishment in this great city. I feel you need to do something about it. In fact, the closest thing to emotion that I felt regarding this issue is not only sorrow, but outright disgust. Disgust to the Elizabeth Animal Shelter, disgust to the management, and unfortunately, disgust to you gentlemen, for the reason being that nothing has happened for several years now. I'm disgusted. And I'm even more disgusted because this establishment is supposed to be a sanctuary for animals. I'm an animal lover myself, but it's run like a World War II Nazi concentration camp, where more dogs are killed than they can even be captured. You might think that I'm exaggerating, but many of you, but many have not walked into the shelter recently. How many of you have actually lost a friend, a best friend, for five years, and then told later, he was microchipped? Later told that they, the dog was thrown into the dumpster without any kind of consideration whatsoever, that the dog was microchipped, it had paperwork, it was, had registration, and had proof of ownership. Nothing whatsoever. Just thrown into the dumpster. At 15 years old, I was told this by the Animal Shelter Management. 15 years old. The conditions within the shelter are primitive at best, and I understand some of you have not understood what exactly we're here for. And we're here for justice for Daphne and Rocco. Ms. Jennifer Arteta is the main proponent of justice for Daphne and Rocco, and I'd like for her to speak on the matter now, since it is her, it is her right to do so.
All right, uh, sorry.
Wait, 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 wait. Are you done speaking?
No.
So you gotta, you gotta finish, and then we get to...
Okay, no problem.
That's the way the procedure works.
No problem. On June 5th, 2014, Jennifer Arteta's father surrendered the animals to the Elizabeth Animal Shelter with the intention of having the dogs rehomed and adopted. Without the state mandate, proper proof of ownership, medical history, and our background history of the animals, they were taken in, and less than an hour, no, less than an hour later, they were euthanized. Not only was there no paperwork provided by Mr. Arteta's father, but even more appalling is that he, in fact, had no legal right to surrender those animals, and the shelter failed to ask for proper, the proper questions or follow the stated state order protocols. Furthermore, in the state of New Jersey Department of Health on Animal Control, Section 4, calling 19-15, point 16, Section E1, clearly states, since it's revisioned 2012, that both stray and voluntary surrendered dogs must be offered for adoption for a minimum of seven days. Half an hour. They were held for half an hour until they were euthanized. Half an hour. We have witnessed that it was half an hour. We were told, Jennifer Arteta was told by the management, that it was half an hour. Was it, is half an hour enough for a veterinarian to come in and determine whether the animals were sick or not? I don't think so. You might be thinking, "Well, so what exactly do you want me to do about this?" Truthfully, I personally would love for the shelter to be immediately closed and investigated by the New Jersey Department of Health for widespread issues of animal cruelty, but knowing politics, I know that probably won't happen. However, let me warn you, as long as I and Jennifer are involved in this case, we will not back down. You may challenge us, and you may try to ignore us, but can you ignore upwards of 2,000 people who have signed a petition in the last four days? 2,000 people. Can you ignore hundreds of worried citizens standing outside this building on Martin Luther King Boulevard for days and days on end? Or even ignore the massive media coverage that will shortly take over this issue? I think not. But as much as it pains me, I'm a true believer in democracy, I believe that cooperation with elected officials will bring about change, but I need to see it to believe it. And as far as I'm concerned, we have two options on the table. Either one, we together temporarily shut the shelter down for an internal investigation, pending a review for the conditions of the shelter, or two, Jennifer and I must take legal action. The ball is in your court, gentlemen. Thank you.
Me and Hammer together, I don't know if they wanted to...
What else wants to speak?
Not until you're done.
He already said everything.
I want to say something. Not, "Good evening, everyone."
Good evening.
Um, Joe, I'm a neighbor of yours, how are you? My name is Rosa Joseph.
Rosa Joseph?
Yes. 843 Park Avenue.
Okay.
Um, I'm a volunteer for an animal rescue group that has been taking dogs from Elizabeth Shelter for the last, ever since Mayor Wolf, which has been mayor, we've been taking dogs from Elizabeth Shelter. What they say is true, unfortunately. We never spoke out, because what happens is when you speak out, you're not allowed to go back in there to help the animals. So that means that animals are going to be put to sleep because you spoke out against them. They don't scan for microchipping. They never have. They tell you, when you ask, "The scanner's broken," but we can't find it. They don't know animal behavior, so if someone leaves a dog tied outside the shelter and is petrified, they deem it unadaptable. So that animal is just, they put a card in front of the cage, "Unadaptable," and what happens is, one case, our group went in there, and our president saw the dog, it was like a shepherd mix, petrified, but we took it and we got him adopted. Do you have to hire people? First of all, I truly believe that you need to clean house. The mentality, let's just say, I'm not going to mention your name, but I can bring people in anonymously, everybody's afraid of speaking, because they're with other rescue groups, and if they speak out, they're not going to be allowed to take animals from there. That's a death sentence. One of the guys that works there, his nickname is Doctor Death. He wants to kill everything, and you can interview each one of them, and they will tell you which one it is. And I'm more than willing to tell you in private. He wants to kill everything. There, somebody from another group could, went in there and asked, "How come you have no cats here?" He says, "It depends how you keep your records in the books." In other words, you can say, "I used this medication to euthanize, um, an injured raccoon and kill the cat instead." You surrender animals, you're taking them into your hands. Any animal that gets to, and by the way, when you call to surrender an animal, there are a lot of people losing their homes, okay? They have nowhere to turn to. They reach out to rescue groups sometimes, they don't know rescue groups exist, so they think the shelter is the only, the only safe haven, the only chance for these animals to be adopted. We know it's not. So what happens, they call, "I'm moving, I can't take my dog with me." Guess what happens? They tell you, "Thursdays is surrender day," which is not true. They're supposed to take in animals throughout the week. Surrender day means Thursday morning, you come in, you leave your animal there, the vet comes, and the vet kills it. Because the vet is coming in to euthanize these animals. That's what's happening. Something's got to be done. There are a lot of people out there looking for work. I can tell you a couple people who do a great job, who have experience in animal control. All you have to do is look to the union shelter. A couple years ago, that changed hands. Not, it was still run by a union, but the person who used to be there, when people used to surrender cats, used to dump them in the back. Okay? The new people, what the differences between Elizabeth, Linden, are the two worst shelters in our area, as to a difference between Union, Woodbridge, and even Newark, they have websites, they have Facebook pages, and this, this doesn't cost the city anything. This is done by volunteers, and I'm more than willing to help out with the Facebook or the website. But, another thing is, they do not allow you to take pictures of the animals. Even if I go in there, they know who I am, that I'm not allowed to take pictures. How, right now, there are three dogs, they're going to be euthanized on Thursday morning. I want a reprieve. I want them one more week, so we can share those animals. We have no pictures. No pictures. There are two pit bulls, about two years old, very, very friendly, and there's one pit bull puppy, five months old, with parvo. Okay? We need a rescue group to go in there and get those animals, and we can do it, but we need at least one more week. It's just not enough time. Rescue groups like us, we don't have a facility. We don't have a shelter, we rely on foster homes, so we can't, I can't say, "I'm going to take a dog into my house." I can't. I actually foster cats for the group I'm with, and I have a dog on my own, so we need to ask around and beg people, "Can you please foster for us?" We actually have about five dogs that are in boarding facilities, and we pay about $15, $20 a day. We've had a couple dogs, a couple years. So, we actually took one dog from Elizabeth that they believed had a broken back. It wasn't. The dog was loose for a long time, two surgeries. It's cost us about $10,000 so far. That dog might not be adopted, ever, he has wheels, so it's very hard. It's not a little dog, it's a 56-pound dog. So, I, I, nothing is going to change, I can guarantee you, I don't care what you do, you can, you know, investigate, you have to clean house. You have to. The mentality is not going to change. It's not going to change. Especially the one they called Doctor Death. He has to be transferred to another department that is not, they, he cannot handle any more animals. He's stressed, he's been there for a long time, and he should not be there. It's a crime. I might be, right now, I probably won't be able to show my face again at the shelter, because that's how they operate.
These three dogs you mentioned, which, you said there were three pit bulls?
There are three. Two are about two years old, one female, one male, and one puppy, five months old. They were about six. We already, we are taking another dog, somebody else is taking a Chih Tzu that has an eye problem, and there's a, there was another dog that's also being pulled, but those three so far, we have no commitment from shelter, because we haven't had the time, we just found out about them. I'm just asking, please.
One week, I guess.
Please. So we can get, you know, we can continue to share. Also, by the way, we've had cooperation, much cooperation from other shelters. Newark has taken from Elizabeth sometimes, and also Woodbridge. I don't know if you remember, a few months ago, they was, they were going to remodel, renovate the shelter. Well, that man was painting. You know, there was not, Elizabeth is small, that's another thing, it's very, very small.
That is our biggest problem.
We have about 12 runs for dogs. When you take a little dog, they put them in cat cages.
That's our biggest problem.
Exactly.
We made an application to Petsmart for a grant.
Okay.
Last year.
Well, that and...
We got denied.
That would be wonderful, but you know what? You have to change your mentality. You can't just render an animal and kill it. And you have to allow people to know, and that's another thing, we need pictures. We share like crazy. We, we, we are Facebook crazy in rescue. We, you, we post something now, and the whole Jersey finds out in a couple minutes, because that's what we do. We need pictures.
Try to work on that.
Please, we need, I mean, we have, I can tell you, we have about 10 people willing to help right now.
Okay.
Whether it's walking the dogs, they don't allow volunteers, by the way.
I am...
Linden, Elizabeth do not allow volunteers, they don't want you to see, and this is from the word of someone else in another shelter, they don't want you to see what they're doing there. It's a horrific situation, it's been going on for many years, nothing's been done, it's unfortunate that this had to happen. If you see her Facebook page and the petition, those dogs were loved. There's no question about it. They mentioned those dogs were emaciated, and they were, they were not adoptable. That's a lie. Go watch her, look at her petition, and you'll see, nobody can love those dogs more than she did. I mean, pictures with Santa, if the dogs were unadaptable, you're not, you know, nobody's sitting there, you know, dressed as Santa is going to say no. No, no, it's just not, something's got to be done, please. I'm actually, a couple of us, I'm going to try to get a meeting with a couple of you in private, if possible. I wasn't planning on speaking up, but since there weren't as many people as we expected today, I wanted to do so, because I wanted them to know that she's not alone. There are a lot of us...
And suggest that if you do have some sort of a volunteer plan or schedule that you guys would like to present.
Right.
We can have you sit with the director of the department and try to work on it.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of different groups that will be willing to come in for that. Thank you so much.
Can I press? Hold on. Any other member of the public wants to address the city council?
Just, oh, God. If I don't live in Elizabeth, do Elizabeth citizens go first?
Enough.
That's how it is in our town. Delia Collins, Clark, New Jersey. I'm here as an advocate for the animals of Elizabeth and New Jersey. I don't understand in the year 2014 that a place, a hellhole like Elizabeth Shelter exists. I've never been there, I don't want to go there, because I know that I would probably throw up. I think that you were probably denied by Petsmart because you're not a 501(c)(3), you're a city shelter.
I don't believe that.
You have to form a 501(c)(3), which will be like a Friends of the Elizabeth Shelter. I went to the Union Shelter this weekend, I worked there, did painting, they got a grant from a couple of people, they remodeled, they're trying to redo the shelter. Years ago, they were considered similar to Elizabeth. People I have seen and have heard that people from Elizabeth will dump their animals at Union, at Kane College, Kane University, so that they don't go to Elizabeth, they may wind up in Union. People that live in Bayway leave their dogs there because of the renovations, and they can't find apartments that will take their pets. We have taken pets that have been left on porches, on in backyards, they become emaciated, they become dehydrated. Rosa and our group have brought some of these dogs, brought them back to health. Other groups try to go in and pull, and again, you, if you say anything, from what I hear, this is all secondhand, you're told, you're told never to come back. Rescue groups want to help. There's, in the county itself, there's 12 to 14 rescue groups that rescue dogs, rescue cats, take animals to Raptor Trust, take animals to Farm Havens, animals that are found that, you know, are abandoned in these houses, they're, they need to be vetted, they need to get shots, they need to get rabies. These are things that your rescue groups do. I've never heard anyone be able to take pictures. Union Shelter takes pictures, Woodbridge takes pictures, Edison's group takes pictures. These are probably owned, some of these are owned dogs. We've, we've, through our Facebook page, Union County Lost Pets, we've reunited several Elizabeth pets with their families, or gotten them adopted. So I hope that you have the time to go there, see what it looks like, look on, go to Union, see what it looks like, go to Woodbridge, we're trying to work with Linden to get their place up to par in 2014. It shouldn't be like this in New Jersey. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Wendy Suarez, I live at 40 Prospect Street, Elizabeth. I have not nearly as a similar issue, and I feel like Jen did the right thing, coming here and getting you guys' attentions in order for her children, because those are what dogs and cats are to us. You treat them like family, they're your children. She's getting justice for them. I feel like it goes beyond the shelter. Police, the police has done absolutely nothing for my six-year-old toy poodle, they got attacked by a pit bull. Now, I want to clarify this, I'm not against animals being euthanized, I don't want this pit bull to go down. I actually just want the police and City Hall to hear me, because I've been calling since last Wednesday, and asking for them to have a police report. I feel like owners are responsible for their pets. Jen is a very responsible person, and she's taken every precaution to take care of those dogs, and I feel like there's other people that don't deserve to have dogs or cats, and I feel like my neighbors are one of them. The fence is completely collapsing, and granted, they're not the owners of the house, they allowed their dog to be on leash without a muzzle and wandering around the backyard. She went under the fence and attacked my 10-pound poodle, who needed surgery, was hospitalized, and had tube straining, blood out of him, so, and has multiple sutures. So, now you tell me, how is this not a police matter? I've called several times and I went to the police. But how is this not, so you're telling me...
You have to sue them.
That's what, that's what they've been telling me. So now, my question is, so when that pit bull gets out, not that I want the pit bull, I want the, the owner to take responsibility for their actions, not necessarily have to pay for the medical bills. I'm talking about, you know, fencing up, protecting their dog, not having them...
It's a civil matter.
Do you see what I'm saying? So my, my issue is, what if that dog was to get out and bite a two-year-old?
Still a civil matter. It's not a crime, it's still a civil matter.
That's not a crime, that you're not protecting your animal and going out and hurting.
It's going to be charged by the person who got hurt, like you, you can charge them.
And that's the only thing that City Hall could ever do?
Not City Hall, Police Department.
I mean, the police, but the Police Department isn't taking anything unless I like it.
They're not going to file a complaint without you doing it yourself. It's your, your, your dog that got hurt, right?
Correct. Okay, well, I just want you guys to...
That's the proper procedure.
Okay, well, I just, I feel like that's a terrible procedure, that's personally my opinion, not that any of you guys can...
My dog, when I was younger, jumped the fence and bit somebody down the street, they sued my parents, we had to get rid of the dog, the insurance company wouldn't pay for it. And it wasn't that we weren't properly securing him, he was just a strong dog, and he would break the chain when he wanted to model, and that's what we do, but it was a civil matter, and the people that got hurt would sue us. Insurance company steps in, they pay, and then they turn to the owners, "We're not going to insure you again until you get rid of this dog."
What about leash laws? What happens with a leash law?
My dog was on a leash.
No, their dog.
Their dog was on a leash, at all. But anyways, I got nothing. I had, I mean, the only person that's been able to help me has been Mark Calicchio from the animal, animal control, and he's been very, very helpful, but, you know, the dog's in quarantine for 10 days and after that. I mean, there's no proof of any vaccination records. I have my dog's vaccination records, and I showed it to the owner, and the owner says, "I don't even have mine right now." What does that mean?
That's a...
You know, I just, I feel like dogs, we are their advocates, and we need to speak out for them, and if we don't, then they get just brushed under. Dogs and cats, and I feel like we should do better for our animals. There's so many strays on Prospect Street, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, I have like three cats roaming around. I just feel like, you know, they should take better precaution of how they go about ending someone's life, a dog, it's, it's family. So I feel like you did the right thing, and hopefully you get justice for them.
Just, your, your, my point is, your, your dog that got injured?
Mm-hmm.
You should get an attorney, and really do something.
Okay. Is it, I'm sorry, I don't know if this is like, I don't know who to go to.
If you want to wait till the end of the meeting, we can talk.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
My dog.
Yes, thanks.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Arteta, I live on 15 Dayton Street. As you've all heard, my dogs were Rocco and Daphne. I went away for three weeks, I left my father in charge of my dogs, he was okay with, you know, having them fed and all that, and I come back, and they're not there, and my dad tells me they ran away. I put flyers all over the place to try to look for them, and I get advised to go to my local animal shelter. So, I go on Sunday, nobody shows up. From 2:00 to 4:00, two hours, they can vouch for me, they were with me, nobody shows up. They're ours. I come back Monday morning, I leave a flyer on Sunday, come back Monday morning, I find two animal officers, and I explain to him, "Listen, you see the dogs on the wall, like, can you please help me look for them, I think they're lost." They take a look at it, they pause, they don't say anything to me, they're like, "You know, we picked up two pit bulls on Catherine Street, take a look at them." He lifts up like a little, a little thing that blocks the dogs from coming to the front, he lifts them up, I'll take a glance, and then he puts it down, and I'm like, "Okay, well, I get, it's not my dog, whatever." He's like, "Okay, we'll keep in touch." As I'm walking out, I see one of my dog's collar and leash hanging on one of the kennels, and I take a look at him, like, "This is my dog's collar and leash, like, why is it doing here?" And then he is like, he snatches it away from me, he's like, "Listen, I don't know what you're talking about, your dogs were never here, like, what are you talking about?" I'm like, "Sir, this is my dog." I show him a picture of Rocco wearing it, I don't have one right now, I show him a picture of Rocco wearing it, he still denies it, he's like, "Listen, this is not your dog, the collar was donated 14 years ago." I'm like, "Okay, it's hard to believe that a design like that would be made 14 years ago." So, I leave, I call Mark Calicchio, he's the supervisor at the health department, and he tells me, "Listen, I'm sorry ma'am, I can't help you because you're basing yourself on a simple collar and leash. I know my men, they're, they're good at this job, they wouldn't lie to you." Obviously, everybody knows that's a lie, they were completely lying to me. I go back, the supervisor at the shelter's there, he's already waiting for me, and he tells me, and I go up to him, I explain the story to him, and he's like, "Listen, if your father came and surrendered the dogs, dogs are considered property here, I can't do anything about it, he showed us a license, and, and that's it." But I'm like, "Sir, I have all the paperwork on these dogs, everything that, from their adoption papers, from their vaccinations, from their neutering, their spaying, their training, their vet records, everything's under me, I always signed off on these dogs. Why is it that, you know, my dad can go and just surrender these dogs without my consent, and then not ask for a proper ownership paper or proper vet record, you know?" So, they're like, "You know, but they're considered property." It's like, you know, me taking my mom's car, taking it to a junkyard, getting it trashed, and then, you know, the junkyard getting sued because they're not asking for proper paperwork, whose car is this? You know, they can get in big trouble. And I'm comparing it to this situation, because it's the same thing. And, so, he, they, I leave, and I come back, and I ask why, you know, my dogs were put to sleep. I ask him to show me the euthanasia paper, and he shows me it, I see the address, my dogs' names. I'm sure they're not even aware of their age, because they didn't ask for any background on these dogs, and they said that they were both sick. Sick, not even unadaptable, but he says it from his perspective that they're unadaptable. He said that they were both sick. You know, I just want to know what kind of vet signed off that both of my dogs, one of them was two, the other one was one. Perfectly healthy pits, I even brought you a picture of them, so you can see how healthy they were. You know, she was two and he was one, like, how do these dogs look sick to you? You know, they were probably taken care of, spayed, neutered, according to, you know, the state law, according to the city's law, that they have to be healthy and, you know, taken care of, and Daphne was registered under the city as well. Rocco I haven't yet, because, you know, I just adopted him, but it's, I, I just don't, I just still don't have an answer as to why my dogs were put to sleep. The shelter, yeah, and the shelter has no answer for me, except that it's between the supervisor of the shelter and the vet. And the supervisor doesn't want to say anything. And the supervisor doesn't even want to talk to me about it, like, he has nothing to say on, on the matter. So that's why I came here today, to see if you fine gentlemen can help me with this case, help me get some answers as to why perfectly two pit bulls were put to sleep. You know, they were never aggressive, there's no police report in the city that they were ever aggressive, that they ever even scratched the person, you know, so I just want to know why. You can ask your men at the shelter, I'm pretty sure they won't even give you an answer, because they won't even give the proper owner an answer.
I know the law department's looking into this, so, it's under law, law department review, um, we've instructed not to talk about it, to the public yet, so, if you, what I would suggest to get that answer would probably be to, to call our law department.
Your law department?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Eight-two-zero-four-zero.
Four-zero-zero-nine.
And also wanted to like, also give some suggestions on maybe, um, also volunteers, like, you know, Ms. Rosa's ad, she said, uh, volunteer is very important, there's been a lot of people that told me they wanted to volunteer at the Elizabeth Animal Shelter, and they've been denied, and they had to go and volunteer in Newark, when they're Elizabeth residents.
Well, like I said to, to Ms. Rosa Joseph, if you guys can get together and put together a plan-
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, you can feel free to, you can bring it to the city clerk, or bring it to me, and we'll try to set up a meeting with the director of that department, and we'll try to put something in place.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Anthony Click, 417 South Fifth Street here in Elizabeth. Most of what I would have said has already been said, so I'd be very, very brief, uh, but, emotions aside, dealing with a shelter that can't possibly meet the needs of the city, just as a citizen who owns dogs as well, in two years, I have collected 14 dogs and one cat on my own, doing nothing but walking my dogs in Motel Park. So I'm talking a concentrated area, which is Motel Park, there are stray dogs everywhere on a constant basis. Sometimes I've actually called the shelter to say I've found a dog. More often than not, you don't get an answer on the phone, um, it will just ring incessantly, uh, never even go to a voicemail. Uh, occasionally you'll get a voicemail, um, I've gone down there in person numerous times in the middle of the day, the door is locked, and there's no trucks there. So, I can just assume all these guys are out busy doing their job, I don't know where they all are. More often than not, I end up just taking animals back to my house, and I end up on my own, either trying to find an owner of the dog, or trying to find someone who will take the thing in. The few times I have gotten the dog taken down to the shelter, only goodness knows what happens to that dog, I never hear about it again. But I just had a recent experience where there was a dog I had previously rescued, found a new home for, the original owner magically surfaced, and there was some dispute over who owned this dog, so we said, "Well, we'll find out." Um, went down to the shelter, like has been previously said, um, their scanner magically did not work, they said it was the battery, they don't have spare batteries, so they couldn't check it. The supposed original owner said, "Well, that dog is microchipped." They held the dog through the holiday weekend that just passed, um, I was in there, that dog that was now put in the kennel was the only dog in the entire place, this place was as vacant the whole animal as long I was in there, and I walked into the back where the kennels are, it was just an empty shelter. Um, they still screwed that up, they had the dog with collars and tags, they called the new owner on Monday morning first thing, after saying, "Well, let's wait till Monday", I could think of Tuesday, because Monday was the holiday, they said, "Let's wait till Tuesday, we'll call down to City Hall, we'll get the official records of who really owns this dog and resolve the dispute." They called the new owner instead, and said, "We have your dog, come pick it up." The new owner went down and picked the dog up, immediately to be called again on her drive back home to say, "No, no, why do you have that dog, turn around and come back here with that dog." She said, "I'm not coming back with the dog." Long story short, the new owner and the original owner ended up solving their dispute amicably amongst themselves, and the dog didn't get returned to the original owner, but the shelter itself was of like zero value in this case, they couldn't scan the dog for a chip, they called the wrong person to come pick it up, uh, and everyone was surprised, "Why are there no dogs or cats in this shelter?" It's just an empty building when we got there, so-
It's like I'm in an animal shelter with no animals.
Can I make a comment? I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. They also said they euthanized my dogs because there was no space, and because they were pit bulls. And coming and hearing this, it's ridiculous. There was no space?
So, but the crux of it is, is that there are a lot of stray animals in this town, and that shelter is just ill-equipped to handle it. I don't know what they do all day long, but they're not doing what a shelter is done to do.
What's to be done.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Leslie Caddio, 417 South Fifth Street, I'm Anthony's neighbor. Um, in January of this year, I sent an email to the mayor telling him that I would like to help in some way with the shelter, because I knew that they were in trouble because of some of the things that Anthony said as well. Um, I did get an answer, I was referred to somebody who spoke with me once and then never again. Um, I had people lined up to donate money, supplies. Um, my biggest question, you addressed, I think, as to why they don't have a Facebook page, why can't the dogs be networked, why are they being put down so fast, why are the cages empty? And I'm not going to go away either until I get answers. That's it.
Anyone else? Councilman, you want to assist?
Yeah, just a quick question for this direction, Ms. Rose. Uh, what do you, what do you bring to the animal, when you got to try to get them, what do you house them? When you bring them for adoption?
Well, it depends. Um, normally, if we know in advance, for example, we're taking, um, Lab Mix, I think we're taking him tomorrow, he's going to be transferred somewhere, it's going to pick him up, we take him to our vet first. He'll be giving shots, whatever, right now, this one is going to be boarded in a facility called Elizabeth Dayton Kennels.
Where's that?
Sterling.
Sterling?
Yes.
Okay.
They have a few of our dogs.
Uh-huh.
Um, because like I said, uh, foster homes are far in between, that's another thing, if we go to Elizabeth and we do a, you know, a, you know, neighborhood thing, I can, I can guarantee we can get some foster homes for some of these animals, um, but nothing's happening. If we can get a Facebook page, a website, um, I'm telling you, we're, we're volunteering, I mean, we will cross-post, so that dog is going to get his shots first, he might stay overnight at the vet's office, just in case there's anything, but, um, and then go to our kennel in the meantime, we'll take pictures at the vet's office, we'll put him up on the internet, he'll get neutered if he's not neutered already. Uh, we don't adopt anything that's not neutered, unless it's very small, uh, a puppy.
How many, how many do you have on hand now, do you know?
Okay, we have about maybe 15?
A 15?
15 dogs, and about the same cap, number of cats.
I admire you guys, what you're doing.
It's very hard.
I know.
But we don't, we actually ask also other groups to help us out.
Okay.
If there's a pure breed at the shelter, for example, a boxer, there are a couple boxer rescues, we'll contact them, so we can take them up. Half our dogs are pit bulls, because nobody else wants them. But unfortunately, we cannot take all of them, like, right now, those three, we're going crazy asking groups to, I think, and one responded to me, says, "We can't take them unless we see pictures." But there are no pictures, we can't take pictures.
Yeah, I certainly admire all of you guys, what you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, and, uh, I, I think most of all of us here are animal lovers, certainly I am, you know what I mean? I don't own a dog anymore, only while I do not own a dog anymore, the last two we, my wife and I had, got hit by a car, and it just took the wind out of me, so, I didn't want to go through the pain again, so, uh, knowing the, the last two got, got hit by a car and the knucklehead didn't stop, so, it really took the, the wind out of me for, uh, having a dog anymore. I still love him now, he don't get me wrong.
And we're actually getting one in, that a resident of the city adopted from the shelter, but what happened was, they can't find an apartment for the dog, he's a pit bull, he's a big one.
Yeah.
And nobody wants to rent him, even though this dog is a sweetheart, and he even likes cats.
Yeah.
So, so, right now- So, but anyway, we're taking that dog also in.
Okay, but I think the president mentioned that if you guys get something together, I can tell what-
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Put that together, I would like to meet with-
We'd like, we'd like to get a volunteer plan, if you guys-
Sure, no, we want to-
If you do that, I'd be happy to sit you down-
I can also get the names of people who would like to do what, and-
Yes.
Okay.
So, Councilman, may I-
Yes. Uh, Ms. Joseph, how, how long ago did we speak on the phone?
That was, I spoke to you, maybe about a year ago?
Yeah, there, there, I'm not going to go into the personal nature of the conversation, other than the two major facets. Number one, nobody at this table condemns the violation of state or local ordinances related to the fair treatment of animals.
Oh, I'm sure.
Let's understand that.
No, no, I, I, I know.
So, so, Mr. President, as a first step, I would ask that tomorrow morning, a conversation be held with the director, to insist that immediately, all steps be taken to make sure that all laws and regulations are followed to the T.
That's what we're doing, Councilman.
Okay, fine, fine. Number one.
We're doing that, yeah.
Number two, you and I had discussed the fact that governmental units are not necessarily the total solution for animal care. I recommend it to you that you investigate creating a 501(c)(3)
No, we are a 501(c)(3).
That is not necessarily just Elizabeth, but could be county-wide or regional-wide.
Oh, no, 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 oh, no, we, no, we take from, a lot of Jersey, we just don't take from, we, our commitment is to the Elizabeth shelter.
Okay, the other thing that I told you was, this is an area where, sir, where, where a large enough 501(c)(3) could approach local governmental units to offer their services on a contractual basis, to, to take care of some of these services, okay? And I, I just wish that you had called me back prior to this meeting, so that we could have a follow-up discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, ma'am, yes?
Can I just speak one more?
You can, can be brief. We spoke once, that's not-
During, oh, I'm sorry, during the winter, we had to call Senator Lesniak's office for an issue with an animal in Elizabeth, his aide and the, uh, New Jersey SPCA, the Lin, uh, Elizabeth ACOs, Senator Lesniak's chief of staff, went out to see if this dog was properly sheltered during the winter storms, so, and I did, uh, email and contact both of them regarding the issue with the dogs that were euthanized in Elizabeth, so I will be in contact with his aide and with his office regarding this. He is an animal lover, he has adopted animals previously, he is working with People for Animals in Hillside about the cat situation in, uh, Hillside and Elizabeth, so I will be keeping him informed of the situation here in Elizabeth.
You know, Senator, very well.
Well, I'm going to get to know.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, while we can't speak specifically, Ms. Ortega, uh, you know, regarding the circumstances of your case, certainly, there were enough things raised to hear, hear this evening that, um, sure concern all of us, and, and I'm sure and hopeful that our law department will, you know, address all those concerns, and I definitely agree in that we should do as this president stated, the reprieve for those three dogs, the volunteer plan. But, Ms. Ortega, I'm, I'm the councilman of your ward, and, you know, on Dayton Street, you said?
Yeah, yeah, Dayton Street.
Um, if you may, before you leave, if I could get numbers so we could be in contact-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, because I'd like to also be involved with this and, and help move this forward so we can make the change, whatever changes are needed at the shelter, so that these things, uh, whatever happened, that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, may I?
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, this is very sickness, what I heard tonight, I mean, uh, something needs to be done. I know that some of you are preview of what's happening with the law department, some of us, we are not, and I wonder why. Uh, number two, not too long ago, we appropriated, if I'm not mistaken, a million dollar, Christian Barlish, our director, from what about, she requested to-
Apply for a grant. She never got the grant.
She never got the grant. So, we got tonight. Still, as a city as big of Elizabeth, we, we have to be able to provide proper care for the animal that people are abandoning, or that people, they no longer could afford to maintain, and to hear atrocity that is happening in our city, I don't think it's happening in any other part of the world, it's a shame on us if this thing is happening. So, number one, I don't know what the law department is doing, what we should immediately investigate, stop some, questioning some of those people that are working, and if it's possible, you know, whatever consequences has to be dealt immediately. Uh, Mr. President, I know it's not an easy decision to make, but I, as for one councilman, and enjoy you mentioned, you did the good thing, which you explained to the young lady, it's important that we do something immediately, not to wait for the law department, sometimes the law department takes a lot of times. Uh, whatever the committee, I'd like to be on that committee, Mr. Chairman, as a member of the city council, so that we have the exact issue that will take in place, and not any other diversity or other area will go in a different direction pertaining to what's happening. And of course, the lady, she asked for two weeks, you know, give as much time they need to take care of this animal. One week, two weeks, it might be not sufficient to find somebody that will be willing to take care of some of those big pit bull or whatever, uh, cat, or any other animal, you know?
They're, they're puppies.
Good. So, whatever, if they aren't good, then we have to take care of them, and, uh-
I think in a week, she'll find a puppy.
What happens-
Can, can we know what happened with the, what took place with the law department?
Tell them investigation, Councilman.
Or the, what's going on down there?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay? Let's not stop.
We're going to let them do their job.
Very good. Are we all going to get a report, so we're going to be part of it?
I have to believe that, uh, if we want a report, we can get one, yes.
Can we open it?
If there is a report generated, I guess that is open information, I don't know if there is going to be one.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, I had a question.
Sir, public speaking's over, we, we, the council members were talking.
Okay.
It's a little late on that, I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. Just, just wanted to add real quick, um, personally, I, I know that my colleagues here feel the same way when it comes to our love for animals. Um, I have at home two Siberian Huskies, um, they're 60 pounds each, um, and they are the babies of my family, and I know for a fact that, um, like, even throughout the years, I've fostered a couple of different dogs, um, which I have found, I brought them home, and I posted them on Facebook, just trying to find homes for them, and I know it's a concern, I know my, my colleague, Councilman Questa, he brought up a few months back, um, when he went to the shelter, he was appalled on what happened, uh, like, what, what he was able to see, the condition of everything, and, um, I know that right now, there's so much more improvement that has to be done, but it, it is better than what it was before, um, because of what was brought up during that time. Um, and a few months ago, I know I mentioned to the idea of a website, and I know it's harder, hard to maintain, if I just want to bring on the table, um, even if we could see if immediately, um, we could grant permissions just for, uh, the rescue groups that are credible, allow for them to take pictures.
That's what I, that's why I want them to come up with a plan.
That's it. But definitely, we, we feel your concern.
She's got a list, she's got a list of 13 rescue groups, so-
We have a few that would be willing to-
So, I mean, we don't want all 13 going into the-
No, 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 no.
No, no, but if you have a group of volunteers-
No, maybe just one or two people only to take pictures.
That's what I'm saying.
You don't want it, no.
I think the, the best thing would be to come up with a plan that-
Definitely.
That would work, and would be reasonable, and we could put it into place.
And we can also give you a couple of, um, shelter, um, animal control officers to contact for any questions, and Union Shelter or Woolbridge will be more than, you know, glad to help you. They're doing wonderful, wonderful work.
St. Hubert's.
Well, St. Hubert's too, but Union, I think, is closer to us because of size, uh, it's more comparable, um, you'll be able to relate more to the Union, I think. And they're, they're doing, I mean, Facebook, all the time, they find an animal, they post it right away, "We just found this dog," so we, we share it, and we just found a dog from Elizabeth, was taken to Newark, they posted on Facebook, and I saw the flyer in Elizabeth, and I sent the woman the picture from Facebook, and it was her dog, because she didn't expect it to be in Newark.
Ms. Joseph, we'll, we'll talk, we'll put something together.
Okay, sure.
Councilman Questa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, I'm glad that Councilman Simeon made a statement that I did, because I did bring this to city council's attention a while ago, until I visited the shelter, and I know we cannot get into details because there's an investigation going on, but I just want, I want the record to reflect that I was assured that improvements had been made, and apparently, apparently that was not the case. So I strongly believe that we should pursue this matter, uh, in addition to the, uh, the efforts of, with volunteers, we should definitely make sure that we get to the bottom of all these allegations that have been brought to our attention tonight.
You've got to listen.
Thank you.
All right, that ends the public speaking of the, uh-
I'm not part of their group.
All right, but I asked if anybody from the public wanted to speak?
And I went to get up, and a gentleman came, as I was trying to, I mean, I'm sorry, I needed my cane to help me up. I apologize.
Make an exception for you, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Adrian Wallace, I reside at 200 Parker Road here in Elizabeth, New Jersey. Um, I understand that when a mother has a child, that they take that child to their bosom, and that child is their love, um, that child gets into trouble, you know, they try to remedy it, or they might, you know, even try to turn a deaf ear to the situation. Um, on May 25th, there was an incident that happened to a resident at 200 Parker Road concerning two officers, and when I made that statement about a mother and a child, I look on Mayor Bowage and his children, which is the, uh, the police of, um, the city of Elizabeth. I know that he prides in them, I've tried to obtain an audience with him to remedy this situation, and I will try not to make it a long situation. Um, as I stated, on May 25th, there was an incident that happened with a resident at 200 Parker Road, between these two officers. Um, on the 26th of May, that resident went to the police department to file a complaint. Uh, she was met with the sergeant of the two officers, and they spoke. The sergeant said that he will talk to the gentleman, and hopefully, some form of agreement could come to play. Fine. When the resident, when the resident returned home, she was met with the two officers who inquired about her health. And the resident said, you know, that she was doing fine, so forth and so on. But as the officers left, they made such a derogatory statement concerning the incident that the resident went to, back to the police department to file a complaint with Internal Affairs. This resident has spoken to the sergeant of the two officers. The resident has spoken to Internal Affairs, I guess they have a, I don't want to mention the person's name, because the resident feels though they may have to take it further. There's no report. Trying to get there, speaking to the dispatcher, trying to call, get in touch with these people, their superior officers and so forth. There was a meeting scheduled, and the meeting did not take place on the resident's arum, but there was another meeting that was supposed to be scheduled, and it was not met. The resident has gone back and forth and back and forth to reschedule the meeting to find out if there was a follow-up, to find out what's going on. But in essence, what this resident, what this tenant wants is to file a report. She wants to end it, closure, go on with her life, let them go on their life. She has gone to the headquarters and asked to speak to the captain, was told, the captain's not available, was told to, was asked to speak to Internal Affairs again. Person has their number, has called. No recording has come up to leave a message. The resident has left her name and her phone number with the dispatcher. This is the City of Elizabeth. This is a resident. This is a citizen of the City of Elizabeth. And because, I mean, I'm not saying that the incident was actually an accident, or if it was intentional, but it happened. It happened, gentlemen. And that resident is me. That person that was, that was happened to was me. I don't want to go into any details, because if it's not rectified, if I cannot make a report on this incident, which I can't understand why, I really cannot understand why, then that means I have to go to another step, which, me personally, I really do not want to do that. I really do not want to do it. I would like it to be resolved.
Have you got seated Director yet?
I've, I've gone there. This is what I was told. Can I speak to another sergeant if Sergeant Bibbly Bop is not there? Well, give me your name. Tell me who you want to speak to. It is frustrating, trying to keep my calm, trying not to go over the line, trying not to be an indecent person, because that's not who and what I am. But speaking with them, when I asked them, well, can I speak to somebody else who's in charge of, maybe the captain, or someone that's even over the person in Internal Affairs? Oh, well, miss, these things take time, you know, they take time. This incident happened May 25th. Today is June the 17th. Tell me, it takes this long just to do a report? Explain to me that question, please.
Can you take this number down, please?
Thank you, Connor. The number, please?
558-2020. I'm gonna speak to Director Cosbro. You're gonna tell him Council President told you to call. Amy Miles?
Thank you so much.
If that doesn't get resolved, then you can call me back, okay?
I do remember having your number.
You still do? I know you do, I was in your apartment.
We could have another tea session again.
Yes, we could. I'm always looking for invitations.
I know that. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming. We're gonna start our business session. If you want to stay and watch us do that, that's fine. If you want to leave, that's fine. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Councilman Cuesta.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilman Tuna.
Yeah.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Vaughn.
Here.
Councilman Nasa. President.
All right, first order of business.
Letter dated June 12, 2014, from the Business Administrator requesting authorization for renewal of insurance for Parkford Insurance Company, Parkford, Connecticut, through the agent of record, Lieutenant Souchere, covering auxiliary police officers for the period June 30, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at an annual premium of $310.
Tony, we never got the answer to your question. How many auxiliary police officers?
Yeah. When was that question? Months ago. Or did you know all the information?
We just need the number, Tony.
That's it? Very simple question. How many do we have?
Okay. We'll find out.
Good luck.
Letter dated June 12, 2014, from the Business Administrator requesting to amend the resolution, dated May 27, 2014, awarding to Lawman Supply Company of New Jersey for simunition batteries and other items for simunition training for the police department, at a cost not to exceed $20,000, specifically to include additional equipment, ammunition, guns, vests, and other crime prevention supplies in the amount of $100,000, raising the cost of contract not to exceed $120,000. Letter dated June 13, 2014, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Atlantic Tactical of New Jersey, Inc., in the public building Pennsylvania for the purchase of ammunition, protective vests, and crime prevention equipment supplies for the police department and ambulance services, for the period of May 1, 2014 through April 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $100,000. Letter dated June 13, 2014, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding the contract to General Sales Administration, trading as Major Police Supply, Kentville, New Jersey, for emergency lighting equipment for the Department of Police, Department of Ambulance Service Bureau, for the period of May 29, 2014 through April 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $200,000. Letter dated June 16, 2014, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding contracts to Flemington Aluminum and Brass, Inc., Flemington, New Jersey, Single Control Products, Inc., Ranford, New Jersey, Marble Light Company, Inc., Manasquan, Traffic Parts, Inc., Spring, Texas, General Traffic Equipment Corp., Newburgh, New York, Intelligent Traffic Supply Products, LLC, South Plainfield, New Jersey, for the furnishing of traffic signal parts for the Electrical Bureau of the Police Department, for a two-year period from the date of the award of the contract for all vendors combined in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Business Administrator advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist, recommends the award of a contract to Cummings Metro Power, Inc., North New Jersey, for the emergency repair of the generator and generator transfer switch at City Hall on May 23, 2014, at a cost of $26,4862 for information.
President. I would ask Tony, find out what's, what's happened with the generators for, for the.
Senior centers and the.
Right, yeah. Especially the Sampson Center.
Recreation Center.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Need to find out what's going on with it. I mean, I spoke about it, the Council President, Council talked about it, and I think we got Vaughn, not Vaughn.
Grant.
Grant, Grant, yeah.
We'll follow up.
We need to find out what's going on. Especially Sampson Center, all you need to do is just, just place it in, you know, you don't need to rebuild the center. Thanks.
Question that too, Council.
Okay, letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Elizabeth Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Supervisors Collective Bargaining Agreement for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2017. Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting that your honorable body consider amending the city's table of organization of classified and unclassified titles specifically for the next number 1747.
This, this mean, 200 people are being.
Oh, they're just changing the title.
They changed the title last month? Okay. I see.
They deleted 206 and added 206 and just moving around.
Oh, I see, I see. I think it's, good enough.
Well, the titles have whatever salaries come with those titles. So it's, whatever the title is, that's.
The salary stays the same.
Equivalent to that title.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea, I mean, if you look, they deleted 110 labor ones.
Right.
And they added, the five they deleted from there went to billing maintenance workers that went up from 35 to 40.
Forty, yeah.
Whatever the salary is, there's billing, billing maintenance work in that facility.
I see. Good enough, thank you. Good enough, I see. Yes, sir.
It's bringing titles in.
Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting that your honorable body consider amending Chapter 2.56.110 via the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the Table of Organization of the Elizabeth Police Department.
Same thing. Same thing, I'll find this.
Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting that your honorable body consider amending Chapter 2.60.90 via the Code of the City of Elizabeth, specifically relating to the Table of Organization of the Elizabeth Fire Department.
Just adding a title. Here, here we're actually adding 206, 10, 12 people. Full titles. Doesn't necessarily mean you're full.
It may be just title changes.
What am I just calling title change?
Yeah. Clerk titles are now called keyboarding clerks.
Was that typical?
Yeah.
They don't type anymore, they keep.
That's what it is.
No, it happens, civil service, every year changes titles too, so. You might be doing the same job, but just call it a different name. Funny though, because if you want to be a clerk, though, you still have to do a typing test.
Yes, on a regular typewriter.
Imagine how you get a person who's been keyboarding for the last 15 years, and now they gotta come in and actually type on a typewriter. They don't even know what it is.
Letter dated June 6, 2014, from the City Attorney, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a memorandum of understanding among the Court Authority of New York and New Jersey, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the County of Union, the City of Linden, and the City of Elizabeth, for planning environmental assessment, design, construction, and right-of-way acquisition of I-278, Route 1 and 9, interchange improvements.
Mr. President, I'm happy to see that they're moving this forward, that they're at least beginning to initiate a plan and a design of what this is gonna look like. I've had many residents, particularly in Bayway, asking, where is this miraculous gonna go from? 278 going to 1 and 9 north? We don't have an answer, and this will hopefully begin to move that forward, because it's important with the replacement for Dallas Bridge that that be a part of it, and I know the administration advocated for it as well as myself, so that the bridge doesn't get replaced unless we had that, that missing one. Good job, Council.
Letter dated June 11, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the treasurer to cancel the premium in the amount of $94,100 and the sum of $94,100 be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated. Letter dated June 11, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the treasurer to cancel the following tax credit as set forth in the attached schedule for tax years 2005 and 2006 in the amount of $80,739.26 and the sum of $80,739.26 be credited to miscellaneous revenue not anticipated, and the treasurer be authorized to issue a replacement check in the same amount and to charge the amount thereof to the contingent account.
Tony, explain what happened here?
These are just tax credits. People have basically overpaid and just under.
Never cashed checks?
Never cashed the checks or reclaimed the money, but it is still open to take back with proof in the future as to.
Did we try to send them a letter or?
There's always letters that go off where they're.
Somebody sent me a letter saying they got money that they gave.
The, the question, some cases were in for thousands of bucks. I've sent letters out. Incredible.
I didn't see my, my name on this.
Put it on.
Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel the said disallow senior citizen deductions as per the delineated list for the tax year 2013 in the amount of $10,250. Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer, requesting that a special meeting be held on July 1, 2014, to consider the adoption of the 2015 state fiscal year municipal sewer and capital temporary budgets, 2015 state fiscal year appropriation cap ordinance, and 2015 state fiscal year temporary emergency appropriations, and 2014 state fiscal year transfers.
Starting early this year, huh? Starting early this year.
Well, it's the first, first meeting. July 1st, and normally, we, I think we've started it a half hour early, around seven o'clock. It's not much, it's really the temporary budget is kind of the format.
I won't beat you on July 1st, so make sure.
Councilwoman Nosa. And you want that for seven?
Yeah, seven o'clock, that's ample time.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You indicated last night that if a large number of ABC applicant renewals come in, there may be a need.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, have to play that by ear. If you should have in your pack, and as a matter of fact, as I was gonna mention at the end of the meeting, there's a light colored yellow envelope there.
Yes, we have, we have.
If any of you guys know any of these license holders, you may want to tell them that if they want to avoid having to spend money on an interim permit for the month of July, that they should try to get their application in here relatively quickly. So Tony, I, I, Council brings a good point. We have to do a, an ABC meeting prior to our Tuesday night meeting next week. No, you're right, it was, it was gonna be.
Yeah, that one, 6:30.
Yeah, let's see what happens. I mean, what do you guys, you guys okay with that, coming in 6:30? I mean, the ABC thing's gonna last.
It's gonna be quick, yeah.
Just a renewal, so it'll be 15, 20 minutes, right? All right. Keep the tag, keep the budget meeting at seven, and if we do one for the ABC, we'll do it at 6:30. Thank you, Council. Forgot about that. My brain isn't working.
Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal utility budgets may be necessary.
And on that point, members of the council, we received, we should have all received today an email with the May 2014 expenditures that were spent on sewer repairs, so we should have done an email today. If you didn't get it, make sure you reach out to Director Pappe, because he sent one out to all members of the city. So it's the main list, what he sent.
Letter dated June 17, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with state fiscal year 2014 Appropriations Act requires your honorable body to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated acting benefits.
It was actually at 4:09 PM, and it came from Bruno Parenti of the.
Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Business Administrator's office. So that's who it, if you didn't get it, just.
Letter dated May 23, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services recommending awarding a contract to Chana Zabla, MD, Hillside, New Jersey, for pediatric physician services, sexually transmitted disease services for the period May 1, 2014 through April 30, 2015, at a rate of $100 per hour, not to exceed $50,000 unless further authorized by your honorable body.
Is this, um, is this what we're charging them, like? I don't know if this is just for Elizabeth residents, or if it includes the residents from different.
We normally have a grant for the, anyway, this might offset it.
Find out and check it, sure. Where, where's the 50 grand coming from?
Yeah, all I'm saying, you usually have a grant. I don't know what the exact amount of the grant is.
Can we find out?
Yeah, sure.
And, and I remember us talking about whether charging patients who come in from other towns, it was either 75 bucks. I mean, is that where this money's coming from? Or if it's a grant, I'd like to know.
No, usually it's state grant. So we'll check on 75.
Letter dated June 11, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Health Division of HIV, STV, and TB Services Grant Funds to address sexually transmitted diseases through screening and education conducted through interviews and. conducted through interviews and/or counseling in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars.
This is not for pediatric, pediatric...
Yeah, that may be with the corner.
This is going to be the one that's going to happen.
Tony, you could just get it back to us.
Yeah.
Letter dated June 13th, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting permission for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with UNCF for the purpose of providing scholarships for students from the City of Elizabeth, New Jersey, attending any accredited four-year institution.
The first I've seen is tonight, I have to check, there's no dollar amount here, and there's no, uh...
Does anybody have any idea what this is?
I have no idea. I think that the city was just being the entity designating who gets the scholarship money, must be, uh, uh, UNCF monies, in other words, it's not city monies, it's a pass, isn't it?
Right, but why would we get involved there?
Because you have to have council authorization, uh, to allow the city to be facilitator of the grant, I think, that's my...
It has a question.
There's no agreement attached.
No.
No. Yeah, we'll check, we'll check this out, see if we're on it.
I mean, listen, the school year doesn't start until September, but, I mean, I'd like to know a little bit more about it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, yeah, it's...
Is there any urgency to this, Tony?
I noticed the first I've seen was our...
Mr. President, I think, why don't we hold it till we get backup, you know, the, you know, I mean, we could always put it on.
Yeah, I mean, I've never seen this before.
I'd say, why don't we wait till we get the backup, you know, with the agreement in place?
Yeah, I know a lot of other scholarship programs on the city doesn't involve...
So, so Tony, ask her to get the agreement there to us.
Yeah, we, I just would like to know what's the city involved in this.
Exactly, yeah, then we can put it on before, once we get the agreement.
Okay.
Letter dated June 9th, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to postpone the second mortgage held by the city through the Elizabeth Home Improvement First Time Home Buyer Program on the property located at 817 Martin Street in the amount of thirty-eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars.
And he has a commitment, and, uh, there is an appraisal in place. Counsel, so it says...
Uh... Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah. I'm not fully familiar with this, I don't know what's on it.
I have a card there.
Letter dated June 13th, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting authorization to utilize urban enterprise zone assistance funds for a direct loan to Danic Five LLC for the acquisition of a commercial property formerly known as Kristin Distributors to Slater Drive, Elizabeth, necessary to enable Adelanta Fourth to continue the expansion of its operations in Elizabeth, creating between thirty and fifty full-time jobs in the next two years for residents and surrounding towns.
That's great, finally taking over that empty warehouse.
What, 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 thirty jobs, do you know what the job is?
Uh, I'm not sure. What is it, can we find out, um, what is Danic Five, what are they doing?
Well, Danic Five, they've been with the city for at least twenty years now, they've had the tax abatments, they're right on the, uh, border of the Marina, uh, they've been the world's largest importer of cheeses.
Oh, that's Adelanta Plaza?
Adelanta Plaza.
That's what Danic Five is?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's that warehousing of imported...
Yeah, so they're just expanding their business, they've already had...
Well, they just built a brand new building.
Down by, down by, yes, that's what I'm talking, they're in there.
So they, in addition to the big building they just built, they've taken over this warehouse and they use that for...
They plan on taking this one over too, and...
I know, I know they hired about thirty, forty guys the last time they did it.
Yeah, it's thriving, it's, and, uh...
Hey, listen, sir.
Counsel, Mr. President, is there any way we can get involved in the hiring process, I recommend this?
I think we can, um...
Can we look into it?
I think, I think the best thing to do would be to talk to Director Rodriguez.
Okay.
And, uh...
Yeah, this outfit's very responsive to hiring, uh...
Yeah, they do hire a lot of lawyers.
Because I know I've met with them before.
Yeah, they've had, uh, Andrew Geller and, uh, and the family, so they're very cognizant.
Okay, but I think through Rodriguez, maybe, everybody just on my sense is going.
Okay.
Maybe, uh, maybe have them work with the retail skills center so they can...
Yeah.
Can we find out if it's going to be, uh, I know they got hit pretty hard with Sandy down there.
I don't think they, they got hit.
Yeah?
They come from Adelanta or...
Yeah, they got hit with Sandy.
Wow.
They're right under water.
Yeah, they're right in the water, like, right next door to them.
All right, okay, so we're going to follow right to the Director Rodriguez.
He's mostly warehousing.
Yeah, I know, he's just warehousing.
He's got some operation.
Letter dated...
I'm sorry, so Counsel, any member of council can talk to the director and try to, uh, make some connection with, uh, this, uh, this company, uh, Danic Five.
Right.
And I know that they usually do hire...
Right, I've been with them before.
Maybe, um, the retail skills center, or, uh, go through the retail skills center or the, uh...
Well, there's mostly warehousing jobs, I don't know if they...
The EDC's got a, started a program with, uh, with wareh, with, uh, Wakeford.
Yeah, OJ, on the job training.
On the job training, and I think that, um, that might be a good facility to bring on some of the guys to...
If the Tinker Rayman was...
Yes, she's part of that, yes.
That's my close friend.
Letter dated June 16th, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development requesting that your honorable body consider to approve the designation of Y Homes, Inc. as a community housing development organization within the City of Elizabeth for the purpose of supporting and to help low, moderate income persons through the provision of decent, integrated, and affordable housing as well as support service to facilitate living in the community.
Anybody have any questions?
Letter dated June 9th, 2014, from the City Engineer requesting authorization for proper city officials to execute an access agreement with Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties to allow the city access to the Elizabeth River Levy System through the joint meeting in order to complete levy maintenance associated with the Elizabeth River Flood Control Project, South Front Street to Trenton Avenue. Letter dated June 9th, 2014, from the Director of Public Works requesting approval of change order number one for the contract awarded to Simpson and Brown, Inc. for the Elizabeth Municipal Marina Rehabilitation at an original cost of two million three hundred thirty-four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars ninety-six cents to provide further for additional hidden damages involving the existing steel wave screen that protects the Marina from the navigation channel, specifically the replacement of loose and damaged stainless steel nuts, bolts, and splice plates, and welding of connections performed underwater by divers at an additional cost of ninety-five thousand two hundred thirteen dollars, increasing the original contract amount to two million four hundred thirty thousand one hundred three dollars seventy-six cents.
So this is the same thing where they come upon things where it's unexpected.
Spent some nuts and bolts.
Can we find out, Tony, what's the ETA on this thing? When are they going to be done? Yeah, I was hoping we were going to have our live voice fireworks down there this year, but I don't think that's going to happen. It's only a week and a half away.
Can we get reimbursed by a FIMO?
It says that, uh, ninety percent of all...
Thank you, thank you.
So now I think that would be included.
That was all part of that agreement.
Okay, I see.
Letter dated June 10th, 2014, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Fagon Electric, Inc. to Scataway, New Jersey, for the traffic signal improvements on Elizabeth Avenue at Jefferson Avenue and Elizabeth Avenue at Bridge Street and Winfield Scott Plaza at a cost of eight hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars ten cents.
It's part of that grant that we, uh, it is a grant there, uh, three hundred and five thousand.
What, what are we doing? What are we doing?
Well, just improvements.
I know, what's...
Traffic signal improvements.
What's that mean?
I don't know.
They're going to put, build a, a big signal item.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Because I'm interested in Bridge Street, because, you know, you can go...
You can't make the left.
Can't make the left there.
Everybody does.
But, and, well, that's what I want to know, what are they going to do there?
Can we find out, Tony, what exactly they're going to do at these intersections that cost us a hundred and fifty dollars?
I need to find out what they're doing, also with Johnson Avenue, the same thing.
Are we putting up random light bulbs, is that, I mean, they do, those are expensive, but, I mean, is that what we're doing, are we putting up those?
What are they doing? You know, what are they doing? What are they going to do, they're going to coast us, what, three hundred?
It's going to coast eight hundred.
What are they doing?
I can tell you each light's a hundred fifty dollars. I said each light that goes up is a hundred fifty, man.
Yeah, but it's got to be gold.
Not anymore.
Letter dated June 16th, 2014, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Johnson, Mia Moran, and Thompson, Inc. Trenton, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the Design and Construction Administration of the 2014 Road Reservicing Program, and they're in the process of determining the cost which will be provided for the June 24th meeting.
All right, looks at the fifth words, you're getting all the repeat.
Excuse me?
There you go.
Yeah, definitely.
Come on, man.
Come on, man.
Go ahead.
Letter dated June 16th, 2014, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to TMM Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide professional engineering services in connection with the Design and Construction Administration of the 2014 Road Reservicing Program, and they are in the process of determining the cost which will be provided for the June 24th meeting.
All right, this one's more evenly divided between first and second.
Fifth ward, that ain't even included.
Actually, I have a couple on the other one, too. Take that back, Counsel.
See what I mean, see what I'm saying?
Letter dated June 17th, 2014, from the Director of Public Works recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Island, New Jersey, to provide engineering and field services during construction, including conducting meeting, review of middles, and shop drawings, full-time inspection, and administrative services at a time and material basis in connection with the Elizabeth River Flood Control Project levy maintenance contract South Front Street to Trenton Avenue in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Tony, can you find out from John, when is that last phase going to be completed for Third Avenue and, uh, South Front, South First Street? I know we're waiting for some sort of federal DPD approval.
Permit, so?
Yeah.
Uh, was it, uh, South Front Street, right?
No, no, South First.
South First.
South First and Third Avenue.
Right.
Letter dated June 6th, 2014, from Mr. William Alston, Elizabeth, requesting to be appointed as constable for a period of three years.
So he's going to do this in addition to his contract?
You have, from the State of New Jersey, from Ms. Charlotte Snyder, the Franco-Mazza Civic Association, uh, would like to amend the time for their festival date of June 22nd, that's a Sunday, the residents have asked that they change from six thirty PM to ten thirty and move it to two PM to nine PM.
So it's going to end an hour and a half earlier?
Yes.
If nobody has any problem with it?
No, I think it's like...
Well, it doesn't have to go on, I just need to...
You want to make sure Tony gets it.
All right, um, a couple of things I want to mention. I mentioned to you, everyone, that there's a listing in your, in a yellow envelope that has the licenses that were not renewed at the last meeting. Um, I also mentioned to you, there is, uh, from Bruno regarding the expenses of sewer repairs for that. Got this petition.
Alice, come on, Tony.
Who's this?
Alex Marcha, down at the water stage.
So what?
They're trying to make a... Maybe it's the bill and...
Right, no, I, who signed this petition?
The resident, that's how it was explained to me. She submitted, and then some of the residents in the area signed it.
Counsel, are you looking at it today?
Yeah.
Um, for those who are interested, uh, they're doing an, um, an event for George Casseline, so everyone should know who he is. Um, I know council requests him to hold this, so you can speak to him after the meeting.
National Light Out is coming on August 5th. For those who don't know, um, it kind of sneaks up on you, we're only about a month away, if you have anybody in your community that has, um, been outstanding in helping prevent crime or has done some good work in the neighborhood, consider bringing their names to the attention of, uh, of our health department with a nice commendation to present to them at the National Light Out, which is going to take place this year, O'Brien Field.
That's all I got. Counselor Torres?
Pass.
Counselor Keenan?
Pass.
Counselor Goman?
This National Light Out, this, the, uh, O'Brien Field, that's that brand-new field?
Yes.
Okay? Is that the fifth ward, that's the fourth ward, is it? Sixth ward? My God, they're getting me fields, new lights.
You better know how to play soccer.
Pass, Counsel.
After all that, Spain still can't win a World Cup. They look like Portugal by that one. Counselor Madam?
Pass. George, I looked through the paper, I didn't find whatever you mentioned, maybe downstairs.
Maybe, I put it in the box.
Put it in the box. I'll pick it up tomorrow, I'm on my way down.
Anything else, Counsel?
I don't know, I just, uh, we'll do something together, Mr. Quest, all right?
Yes, uh, a couple of things, Mr. President, I'm glad you reminded, um, all our colleagues about George Casseline's, uh, benefit dinner, I would appreciate it if you support this event, it's a worthy cause, I think those of us who have had the opportunity to, to know George, know the kind of person that he is, the kind of gentle soul that he is, and he needs, he needs help, he and his family needs help, so whatever you can do, and maybe you can spread the word to your friends, I would sincerely appreciate it. Uh, secondly, Mr. President, um, with all the world-renowned success that the Broadway play, uh, Jersey Boys, is having, combined with the movie that is, um, produced by Clint Eastwood that's coming out this Friday, I think it's only fitting and appropriate that we recognize, uh, a gentleman who, uh, was born in Elizabeth and who, uh, was part of the, uh, Four Seasons Group for eleven years, and from sixty-five to seventy-five, if my memory serves me right, so he was able to perform with the group with some of the most famous songs that Frankie Valli and the Four Seasons recorded. Uh, I had the privilege of speaking with him this afternoon, uh, and Counselor Mass and I would like to, the two of us, to, um, request a commendation for this gentleman, uh, um, whose name is Joe Long.
L-O-N-G.
Yes, that's his, uh, professional name, his last name actually was LaBracha, Frank, right?
LaBracha.
LaBracha, uh, he was born, uh, in Elizabeth, like I said, in the High Street and, uh, Third Avenue area, that's where he was raised, actually. Uh, and so we're requesting, Counselor Mass and I requesting two things, a commendation for the gentleman, and I will give, uh, Yolanda all the information, I'm not sure when to present it, because obviously I want this gentleman to be here when we do this, and also, um, again, Counselor Mass and I are requesting, uh, naming a street, you know, honorary name, because I know we're going to change the name of the street as opposed to the May, but I know it's difficult, it's impossible, so now, we're not requesting we change the name of the street, we're requesting to add his name, an honorary name, uh, the Joe Long, and I asked him, and he said, that's the name he prefers, because that's how he's known professionally, or he's like, uh, and Frank and I are going to organize a reception, a nice event for this gentleman, yes, we're going to really work on this and... We're gonna really work on this and make it really good, and I think it's great for the city. This person is internationally known for his music, and I think he's, you know, he's from Elizabeth, so we should recognize him. One more thing, Mr. President. Finally, I will be attending the World Refugee Day Celebration this Friday, representing the mayor, and I was also invited by the organizers. And I'm asking everyone, those of you who didn't know, but it's an event from 3:30 to 6:00 at the Train Station Plaza, recognizing the fact that thousands and thousands of refugees have come to Elizabeth and have made a difference in our society. I have to say that I was one of those refugees, together with my family. There were at least five of us that were considered refugees for many years, and I'm gonna be saying up your word. So I would ask you to, if you get a chance, to stop by this event, it should be a worthwhile event as well.
When is it?
This is gonna be Friday, between 3:00 and 6:00. I know the program's gonna start at 4:00, right at Julian Place and Grand Street, Train Station. And they're gonna recognize some community people.
In the plaza, right?
In the plaza, right. They're gonna recognize some community people that you may or may not know, I don't know some of them, but I, again, I will be attending, so I mean, if you could support this event, it would be great. And I think that is, Frank, anything else you wanna add about the Joe Long situation?
Well, I'm sure it's something that is very proud for Elizabeth, and especially he was a native of Peterstown, the mother came from Wilmington, Delaware, and then he graduated from Thomas Jefferson, my mama.
That's right, you got that, yes.
And it's a, it's a great news for Elizabeth. They get coverage and publicity, it's one of the positive news that we get once in a while in Elizabeth.
Sir, thank you, Counsel, Mr. Dean.
Just one thing, I need a four-way stop sign to give a look at the corner of Sheridan Avenue and Virginia Street. Since that corner is pretty dangerous, so.
Counsel, just so that you know, I had a request to do a study at Orchard, Key, Westfield, to possibly cross the gardens and everything.
Orchard.
With Garcia Licorages?
Oh, okay, okay.
So I just want you to know the city.
Well, one half of Orchard is in Third Ward, and one half of the.
Doesn't matter. Close, close.
It's a cross between.
That's why I.
It's a joint.
It's a combo special.
Well, that, that's been requested.
It's fine, okay.
Shake hands, guys, and come on.
Counsel, just a couple more things, guys, that I forgot to mention. As all you know, this year we're celebrating 350th anniversary of our city, Elizabeth Town. And on Sunday, June 29th, which is next Sunday, unfortunately, I will not be here, but there's going to be a big event out in front of the Winfield Scott Plaza, very across the street from City Hall, and it's going to be an event with music, entertainment, and food, okay? It's a unity and diversity block party, is what we're calling it. Also, the Union County Freeholders are reminding everyone that on Saturday, June 21st and Sunday, June 22nd, they're doing their computer and electronics recycling event from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Union County Botec School. If anybody has any old computers they wanna get rid of. And lastly, the Fifth Ward's gonna have in Keller Park on July 12th, which is a Saturday from 12:00 to 6:00, the Fifth Ward Cookout and Health Fair.
Thank you.
All right, John, motion for John?
Thank you.